Oh, yeah, I'm sorry Frank, one.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Foxborough Board of Selectmen meeting for December 18th. I'll go over the agenda. I apologize for being a few minutes late. At 6 o'clock, we had an executive session with Police Chief O'Leary in our town council to discuss an ongoing criminal matter. At 7 o'clock, we'll have, as we always do, citizens input. And we also have a, an award to give to one of our employees, Sue Thibodeau. At 7:05, we have two brief things. We'll give a chairman's update, and also Mark Sullivan wants to update the town on some of the recent issues and threats that his family has encountered. At 7:10, Scott Williams, a change of manager for the Renaissance Hotel over at Patriots Place. At 7:15, another change of managers for the Showcase Cinema at Patriots Place with Joseph Norman. At 7:20, we have a public hearing for the Kenny Chesney concert over at Gillette Stadium. And at 7:25, a public hearing which is continued for the Taylor Swift concert at the Gillette Stadium. At 7:30, we invited our town moderator Frank Spillane to discuss with us the potential or the options of having town meetings on Saturdays rather than the traditional weekday. At 7:45, we have the Water and Sewer Board member or members joining us for their request for a special town meeting on March 4th to discuss a water warrant article, a sewer warrant article. At 8 o'clock, we're going to review the 2013 licenses with town manager Kevin Pecos. And 8:15, we're going to enter into the executive, a second executive session under real property negotiations. So if, Mark want to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go into citizens input, regarding the massacre that was over at Sandy Hook Elementary in Connecticut, there's absolutely nothing I can say that I'm sure you haven't thought of. So I think the only appropriate thing I'd like to do is if we could just have a moment of silent prayer or thoughts for the victims over at the Sandy Hook Elementary School in Connecticut. Thank you very much. We have citizens input, but I'd like to start off, we have a citation for Sue Thibodeau, who is our animal control officer, to recognize her for some outstanding achievements. Sue, do you want to come up? Actually, I had the pleasure of meeting Sue today at my house again as she came over to count my chickens and rabbits.
Did you meet her dog Abby by any chance? Yeah.
That was the last call, by the way. Thank you for bringing that up.
Sure.
This is an official citation from the Board of Selectmen Town of Foxborough for Sue Thibodeau. "We, the Foxborough Board of Selectmen, would like to extend our sincere congratulations to Sue Thibodeau, Foxborough's Animal Control Officer, on being named Animal Control Officer of the Year in Massachusetts. This award was established to honor a professional whose efforts throughout the year have promoted responsible pet ownership, and the award was presented to Sue by the Massachusetts Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals and the Animal Rescue League of Boston. As Animal Control Officer for the Town of Foxborough, Sue has worked to increase the dog licensing rate, she has set up a shelter for family pets to be housed during weather emergencies, she has hosted a large animal rescue class, and has organized an event to educate the community about coyotes. She also works on volunteer basis for Guiding Eyes for the Blind, where she raises Labrador Retriever puppies who go on to become guide dogs. The Board of Selectmen is proud to acknowledge the efforts of Sue Thibodeau on behalf of pet owners and the animal population in the Town of Foxborough, and recognize her achievement in being honored by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as Animal Control Officer of the Year, given this 18th day of December 2012. Congratulations." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. Is he still in training?
Oh, yeah. So, let's go. And there was a luncheon today, and she can smell.
All the food. Thank you, Sue. Okay, and we always open it up with citizens input, so I just ask if you could just introduce yourself, if you have something to bring to our attention, if you could just use the microphone?
My name's Dave Lutkus. I ask if you'd bear with me, this is my first time speaking in public. I've got a prepared note I'd like to read. Up until this point, some of you know me only as Dave or an email address. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. Before I start, let's remember the people in Connecticut. This began as a public thank you note to the board and pastor Bill for vowing to bring to light the issues involving Bill Sheehan. My intention was to submit a letter to the editor anonymously. What evolved after six days of trying brings me here tonight. On September 27th, I received an email with a link to one of the local paper's story about Mr. Sheehan. My reply was close to, I hope they throw away the key. Thursday, December 6th, I read another article regarding the board vowing to find answers. I thought, finally, a positive article. I was so impressed that I sat down the next morning, I wrote the following note. Again, please remember, this was intended to be submitted anonymously, which I soon found out the press could not do, therefore I am here in person. I had no intention of releasing my identity. I ask people to please respect the privacy of my family and friends, they are hearing this for the first time as well. The letter stated, "I am writing in regard to your article, Board Vows Action for the Survivors of Bill Sheehan. I am a survivor of his acts, and at this time would like you to respect my request to remain anonymous. This is the first time that I've actually had hope that something would be done in regards to this case. I have spoken to the DA's office, state police, their referred counselor, and Leo in charge. I told each of them my story over the phone. I was told Sheehan's being ill meant he wouldn't be charged. I asked to please be updated. I haven't heard from anyone. I was told there was no need to come in and file a statement report. My summary of every conversation was, thanks for letting us know, you are number X, sorry you had to go through this. It feels the same as 35 years ago. People knew then, we have been told that in at least two articles, adults, students, those involved in the school system, those in Boy Scouts, those at Camp Child, those at the park. I have read he was investigated, but defamation of character was more important at the time. I also read a story earlier that had a line, we all knew he was a perv, we just stayed away from him. The fact is, we all didn't. We all were not as fortunate. That statement to me was offensive. For me, I remember seeing the big kids getting one-on-one time with the teacher, or the scoutmaster, or the boss at the park, and I desperately wanted to be a big kid, so I could be one of them. I did. I became a scout, got a job at the park, and received a citizenship award in junior high. I never understood why, and I always felt Sheehan influenced it. The twinkle in his eye after receiving that plaque made me sick. As I am now beginning to learn, I have spent a long time burying this, and frankly, am not happy it has arisen again. I refuse to go into the details. I will only say that for weeks now, I have been hit with guilty memories of not knowing how to tell on an adult, the feeling I've done something wrong, and assuming but not knowing if there are any more victims because I didn't tell. I can be told it's not my fault, you were young, yada, yada, but it doesn't change the fact that it happened, and it is in my past. Apparently I have issues, and now an explanation of why I don't trust a soul, I can't experience intimacy, and why I keep my family and friends at arm's length. Fantastic, now what? And yes, you are correct, we all have problems. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan and Mr. DeVellis, for your actions. I finally feel as though someone has hurt us. I appreciate and applaud your efforts. Pastor Bill, I may or may not contact you. In any case, thank you as well, and best of luck to the group. Signed, Anonymous, or now Dave Lutkus. In closing, I would like to thank the board on what they have done in this matter. As one of the victims, I'm here to ask that this issue is thoroughly investigated. My feeling is 35 years ago, this issue was buried. I'd like to see the facts come to light, so this won't happen in this town again. Thank you."
Thank you, David. David, do you have a second to sit? I don't want you to just, if you can just sit for a second, just so you're not saying and leaving. First of all, I want to thank you. I know you came from a very far distance to come here tonight. And just to emphasize, you did try to go anonymous with this, and there's certain roadblocks because you can't put anonymous in the paper, and I think you understand that now. We just got finished with an executive session, and what the issue was, criminal matter, and it was specifically talking about this. Obviously can't share the details. But the sense from the board is nobody here is circling the wagons and trying to protect anybody or anything from the past, and we're being proactive, as is the police chief, as is our local council, as is the town manager. Very brave of you to come here tonight, and I know, I mean, the first thing that I'd want to say is I apologize and hope things come out in the open, and you get the answers, and you get the direction from whatever comes out of this. I don't think anyone on this board was, you know, of the age at that time, but certainly I think it's our responsibility now to reach back and try to figure out what the hell happened, and so it doesn't happen again, and make it so you feel comfortable and don't walk away thinking that you're not going to get any of those answers. So I know you're from, you're a little distance away, but if there's any assurance that we're on top of this as much as we can, and we're pushing as much as we can, I just didn't want you to say something and then disappear and have that not hit home, I guess. So thank you for coming in, I do appreciate it. And any other victims or people at that time feel comfortable to come to Police Chief O'Leary, the district attorney who's working on this as well, and then I think Timmy O'Leary, whose focus is on this, as well as other avenues. But please come forward, and please feel comfortable to do that, and as difficult as it is. So, thank you. Mark, do you want to say something?
There's only one word I can say right now that describes you, and that's just extreme courage, and I applaud you for coming forward.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, David. Anybody else under citizens input? Just a couple of quick notes under chairman's update. I just wanted to reach out and thank the people that not only attended town meeting, but the people that worked to put it together, that being the town clerk's office and town hall. And also, as usual, thanks to the advisory committee who spent a lot of time reviewing and making recommendations to many, many articles. And it just seems like we're getting finished with one, and we're going to be starting another one around the corner. Not specifically related to this town meeting, but been in correspondence with our town moderator Frank Spillane. Larry, I was going to reach out to you, I think we talked about this a while ago. Maybe somebody from the planning board to sit with Frank in his office and talk about things that our board and your board and the planning board and the zoning articles can do better. As simple as making prints, who's going to make, you know, who's going to replace the toner and buy the paper, things like that. But also, who brings the town warrant articles forward, in what order they're in, all these little things that have been kind of chipping away over the last couple of years, people had questioned, so we'll find some time to do that in the next couple of weeks. I wanted to say that because there is an agenda item tonight on moving the town meeting, but other than that, there are some things that we need to talk about, so. So, wanted to just give a quick shout out to the J.C.s and all the volunteers that decorated the common for the holidays this year. And there's caroling on the common on Thursday, the twentieth. If anyone's around, it's nice to bring the families and participate. Couple of the quick update agendas that are upcoming. Lorraine's been working on a couple of things. One, we've, the selectmen have asked for kind of an update on the asset review committee, which properties the town has and what positions there are of being sold, and who's looking at that. So, I think at the next meeting, you're going to give an update on that. And then the following meeting, something else we've been kicking around is taking a hard look at the Town Managers Act and the duties and responsibilities of the town manager with respect to the different department heads and with respect to the, the selectmen's, who has jurisdiction over what. And it's been kicking around for a while. Now that we've run the strong Town Managers Act, now that there is a strong town manager and using it, we wanted to kind of sit back and see how it's working, and if we've got to make changes, or if its status quo is fine. But that's been kicking around for a while. So, that's going to be on the following agenda towards the end of January. That's what I have. And Mark, you wanted to say a couple of things?
Yeah, I just wanted to let the board know. I think it's pretty much public knowledge, if you follow it in the papers, that what my family and I have had to go through with, you know, another citizen being a little threatening to us and having to be involved with the court system for now, coming up on a year, nine months anyways. I just wanted to thank the town, the support that it's given me and my family, the board for giving me the support, the town manager and his staff. Extremely appreciated. And the public safety personnel, Chief O'Larry's, his people, really, really worked hard. And it's not just me. They protect this whole town. Outstanding group of public safety people we have. And I'm forever indebted. It was enough to go through assault, but to have the support of the town was, it was nice to have you by my side. So, I wanted to thank the board and everybody. Thank you.
Okay, a few minutes behind, but Scott Williams here from the Renaissance. Welcome.
Good evening.
Hi, evening. All right, so in our packet, we have the Renaissance Hotel and Spa doing business as, and the credentials for Scott Williams. So, you'll be the new, new manager?
Correct. I'm the assistant general manager. I've been with the hotel since opening, so.
Okay. Usually, we'll go around and ask questions, but you want to spend a minute just kind of introducing yourself and your role?
I've been in the hospitality industry for going on thirteen years now. Currently living in Rhode Island. I've been, like I just said, with the hotels since March of two thousand nine, prior to our opening. I'm there average of sixty-eight hours a week. Live and breathe the place. Love the town. Love the hotel. And it's kind of it. I mean, I've handled the room side. I have food and beverage. I've run spas in the past. Never been on a liquor license before, so this would be my first one for that.
Okay. And I think that's the reason you're here in front of us?
Correct.
Is because we're the licensing issuing authority on the alcohol, so?
Correct.
Okay. And any questions from the board?
Just, obviously, you know how important the liquor license is. And so, you're going to be on premise, it looks like, fifty to sixty hours a week?
At minimum, yeah. I'm there typically seven in the morning until seven at night, five, six days a week, so.
And then, who oversees, like, at nighttime, then?
Our food and beverage manager, he's there probably similar amount of hours I am. We have a food and beverage management team of three additional individuals that one of them is always there until closing time. And then they're back in in the morning at five-thirty, so.
Okay, Jenny?
Most of them. Thank you.
Okay, Mark?
You've got all your training. And so, all that matters.
Thank you.
As Linda said, it's, we take serious violations very seriously in this town.
And I'm sure you've been notified of that.
So, be extra careful with your staff, your personnel, and just, you know, good luck to you.
Thank you.
No additional comments?
I move that we approve the change of manager for the Renaissance Hotel located at Twenty-Eight Patriots Place to Scott Williams.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All of in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Scott.
Congratulations, Scott.
Okay. Is Joseph Norman here? In crew? Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, so it won't be repetitive. It's another change of manager. Do you want to give a quick introduction?
Sure. My name's Joseph Norman. I live at one ninety-three Chalk Log Road in Oxbridge, Massachusetts. I've been in the theater industry for twenty-seven years, and I've been with Nash Amusements for ten years. And I'm currently the general manager at Showcase Cinema at the Patriots Place.
Any questions from the board? We'll start this side, this side. Mark?
It's not to be repetitive. They were in the room.
Lorraine?
Most of them.
Okay, great. Jenny?
You know, Joe. You know the routine.
Okay. No further comments?
I move that we approve the change of manager for Showcase Cinema located at Twenty-Four Patriots Place to Joseph Norman.
Second.
Motion made by Linda and seconded by Lorraine. Any further discussion, comments? All of in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Great.
Shake your hand, but it looks like it's broken.
Thanks, guys.
Happy holidays. Thank you. So, at seven-twenty, we had a public hearing for the Kenny Chesney concert at Gillette Stadium. So, we'll read the hearing notice into the record.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one eighty-one, and Section one eighty-three A, and Chapter one thirty-six, Section four, Town of Foxborough Revised Bylaws, Article five, Section six, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, December eighteenth, two thousand twelve, beginning at seven-twenty P.M. in the Andrew A. Gala Junior Meeting Room, Forty South Street, to review the applications submitted by NPS LLC for the Kenny Chesney concert. This event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the Office of Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
And on this particular hearing, I did speak to council, our town council, and a representative from the stadium. And they had asked us if we could continue this till the next meeting, while they work out some details.
Mr. Chairman? Question for the board. Because this may be a considerable public hearing, Walpole has called and asked, the selectmen have asked that they be allowed to meet with you and express their concerns. They meet the night of the eighth. On the eighth, you also have a liquor violation hearing of extremely serious nature, which, if it goes its entire duration, will take several hours without a doubt. Suggestion to the board is that you convene a special meeting, if you are all available on the fifteenth. I have consulted with council in the event. He's needed on this matter, and he is available at night.
Okay, so there's Walpole, and I think the advisory committee, not the advisory committee, the stadium advisory?
Statement Advisory Committee and Walpole Selectmen are also available on the fifteenth.
Okay. Because I know they had recommendations, and they had a couple meetings on this.
As their off week, as it is yours.
Was.
Well, at least we have January first off, so. So, that would be?
I move that we continue the public hearing for the Kenny Chesney concert to be held on January fifteenth.
At seven o'clock?
Seven, yeah.
Seven o'clock work for you?
Those will probably be the only items on that night.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Okay. All of in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero to have it on January eighth at seven.
Fifteenth.
So, I'm sorry, fifteenth. Okay. Next on the agenda is a continuance of the public hearing for the Taylor Swift concert.
Which we already continued once, correct?
Correct. And again, spoke, same notes, spoke to our town council and representatives from the craft organization at Gillette Stadium, and they had asked us to continue this as well to the next available meeting.
Should we hold this till at eight?
Well, I'd suggest you consider seven-thirty, because, you know, if the other one either gets, ends up being a quick matter, or it ends up being withdrawn, or it ends up being continued, we don't want to be sitting here for fifty-five minutes. So, if you go to seven-thirty, we can probably put some business in between. If the Kenny Chesney is going to take you longer, you can always
Push it back.
Jurn, open, and go back to the original one. Come back to Taylor Swift later. But you don't end up sitting here for a long time.
Okay. Hear your motion?
I move that we continue the Taylor Swift concert hearing until January fifteenth at seven-thirty P.M.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All of in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Okay. Just on time.
Do we go get them?
Yeah, if you don't mind. Was Frank here earlier?
Yes.
Was out there? Hey, Frank. Exactly seven-thirty.
No.
Doesn't happen too often. All right. Okay, so, thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Put this on the agenda, because over the last, at least, two years that I, that I know of, people had asked the potential or the possibilities of having a town meeting, other than an evening during the week. Mostly because they start at seven, seven-thirty. Sometimes they get out to midnight. Some of the population, the seniors specifically, have a hard time staying out that late, driving, and maybe some other stuff. So, we've discussed amongst us, you know, is it worth looking at having it on a morning of a Saturday? I think that's the only day that we talked about, Saturday morning, with the understanding that brings up other issues that other people that might not be able to make it on a Saturday. So, I know that there are, it's not just a decision we can make. It's got to go to, it's going to affect our town bylaws. So, we'd have to go to a townwide vote. But it seems to me, since you're the town moderator, you see it from a different perspective. So, I thought it would be nice to have this discussion. And at the end of the discussion, if we think it warrants going further, maybe we put together a three-person committee to kind of look at the pros and cons, and then come back to us. But we kind of wanted to hear your perspective of that item.
Well, I'd first like to ask you, who had been mentioning it? I haven't heard any discussion from anyone. I'm thinking it would be a good idea. Are there a large number of people, just a few?
Seniors brought it up with Dick Highdecker, and I think Dick mentioned it to us, and this has gone back a year.
Yeah, a couple of times, and, yeah.
Yeah. Well, if you change it to a Saturday, you're going to have certain individuals who can't make it on a Saturday. Mainly, I would think, parents who have kids specifically in sports or extracurricular activities. Also, you're going to be more inclined to having individuals who go away for the weekend, individually, or as a family, or as a couple, because the weekend is their, their free time. So, no matter when you have it, you're going to have some kind of a base that can't make it. Also, I would probably want no activity going on at the high school on that Saturday. Now, that would be easy on the annual. Because I know, as all of you know, the annual town meeting starts the first Monday in May with the election, and continues with the warrant the second Monday in May. So, if you change that to the Saturday after the first Monday, the schools could probably work around it. But you never know when you're going to have a special town meeting. This fall, we had the special. In December, we weren't sure when that was going to be until late. And now, we're starting, talking about another one, and the schools have to schedule everything. So, you know, that would be hard to work around, you know, their schedule when they're having events there, too. Also, then you're talking about, you know, scheduling it also with all the workers that come in the counters, you know, the other, you know, custodians. So, there's, there's a lot that goes into it. Now, I just went over and started talking with Bob Cutler, the town clerk, former moderator, and asked him if he knew if there was a lot of towns that do Saturdays. And he said, "Very few." And that's my recollection, too. So, I think the majority of towns, and I would guess the vast majority of towns, still do it during the week and not on Saturdays. Now, we have had weekend, Saturday, special town meetings for the stadium. That was on a Saturday. Big vote. Knew a lot of people were going to come out. Knew it would be a long discussion. Wanted to make it as open to everyone to get there. And we got the date out there as early as possible. So, I think on special warrants, it would make sense, but they're very few and far between. If, but I think staying with the Mondays. Also, as my father once told me when we were talking similar about this, on Saturdays, if you give people more time to discuss the warrant, they will fill that time. So, then you're talking about a whole day for a town meeting. During the night, we always try to go through the warrant and get it done in one night. And I think we're pretty effective that way. Generally, we do get it done in one night. So, I mean, if you really were interested in doing this, my recommendation was, would be to either put it as a warrant article or just have it brought up at the annual by setting up a committee. I'd recommend a committee of five. In the past, when they looked at committees to look at issues on town meeting, and they have been, the moderator has appointed all those people. So, it's not, you know, political from any of the different boards, the selectmen, or anybody like that. Or, you know, you could divide it up somehow. But I would recommend you keep it to a small group if you wanted to do it. I'm not recommending it, but if you wanted to do it. And, you know, and if I was going to appoint any or all of them, I'd want to put people on that really knew how a town meeting is run, that have been involved, former selectmen, former advisory committee members, things to that effect. You know, know and understand the process of putting the warrant together, you know, including, you know, the planning board brings forward, you know, a large number of articles and things like that, as well as this board.
Okay, good input. Anyone from the board, strong feelings they want to discuss? Their thoughts or their experiences with other towns?
I only know this town. And I only know that, you know, several, you know, I'm not saying there's hurts of them, but several senior citizens have mentioned, you know, "Why can't we have it on a Saturday?" And, you know, and I understand the reasonings that you've given. But I think that, you know, because I know this town, that we could make provisions. We could, you know, ask our athletics, you know, to put it on hold for that day or whatever. You know, I mean, I think, you know, we can all cooperate with one another.
When you're accommodating with one group, you're also alienating another group.
I'm not alienating them, though, Frank. I'm not going to get into it, you know. I think that your committee will probably go through all of this, if we choose to have one. But I'm not alienating. I'm saying that the town itself can work through, you know, if kids have games, or the school has, you know, basketball, or, you know, custodians have to come in on a Saturday instead of, you know, staying until midnight on a, on a Tuesday or, or something. And I just think that it's kind of worth the investigation and... And I just think that it's kind of worth the investigation, and I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm not alienating anybody, that's, you know, not what I would have ever said, you know. But I, I just, I'm going by, you know, what people have said. And, and, and some, you know, couples have said, sure, they, they would do a Saturday morning or something, you know, for four hours. So, I don't know. I think it's worth looking at, but if the board doesn't agree, so be it.
I, I just have a question. The, the only meeting that is actually by bylaw, it has to be the second Monday, is the annual meeting, right? The annual town meeting?
Correct.
That's the only one? Any special town meeting, can that be on any day that the, the board or selectman calls it?
Yes.
And is it just a bylaw change, or is it a charter change? Would be something that would have to go before the legislature? Or is it strictly a bylaw change that the, at town meeting could, could determine?
I would, I would have to investigate that, but at a minimum, it's a bylaw change.
Frank, there's nothing in the manager act, so I think it's strictly the bylaw that should have to change.
That's what I assumed, but I didn't want to speak out of it.
No legislative involvement.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
But the A G would have to approve it, correct?
The meeting has to prove it, yeah.
Yeah, but then the A G would have to approve the bylaw.
Oh.
Any new bylaw the A G has to approve?
Yes.
Okay.
Would they, A G has to approve any, any town meeting, action, event change, ultimately, right?
Anything except personnel bylaws, those don't go to the A G, but everything else does.
Change in bylaw.
Bob? He's the expert.
I think this is a tough one, because, you know, it sounds like the general practice is to have it in the evenings and not on the weekends because of those reasons of, you know, perhaps larger numbers of people would be impacted having it on a Saturday morning as opposed to on the evenings, our senior population. And I wonder if, you know, if we decide that we do want a group to look at it to make sure that we represent that piece of it, to see, is this really a transportation issue that we can address with transportation? As opposed to changing the day of the week that we have the meeting on? It's just a thought.
I, if I could.
Sure.
I, I, I would guess that the reason some of the towns went to a Saturday is because their town meetings were going over a number of nights.
Yeah.
So instead of doing it over a number of nights, they tried to do it in one day, where the town of Foxborough generally can get all of their warrant articles, the whole warrant done in one night. That's what, you know, we've been lucky that way, and that's been our goal generally throughout.
All but once.
Yeah. What are your thoughts, Mark?
I think it's, I respect Frank's opinion, Bob's opinion, everybody's. To have a committee and have their findings brought forward would satisfy the people that have asked the question. It, it's not a big, long, lengthy committee thing. And it's not that I'm volunteering for.
You wouldn't be my first choice anyways.
Thank you. I love your shirt. But I think just to appease those and answer the questions and put the pros and cons and, you know, the skill and see, see what comes to boat. And I think Frank's absolutely right, have a five-member board, one selectman, maybe a prior selectman. What do you mean?
I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, it's a selectman committee, don't you have to have a committee with the selectman? So you don't want a selectman?
On its own.
So you're, you're a committee. You're going to do this. So it wouldn't be a selectman-appointed committee, it'd be a town moderator?
It could be any way you want to set it up. But again, what I would recommend is first bring it to town meeting. Let the town meeting decide whether they want to have that committee or not. Because if town meeting says, we like it the way it is, you know, you, you don't set up that committee.
And have it as the first article.
If town meeting says, yeah, well, let's look at it and have them bring it back, you know? And then that warrant article can be written as to how. I would recommend not having any selectmen on it. You know, playing board members, anything like that. It can be, you know, I'd recommend having, for example, Bob Cutler as a non-voting member. So he can bring his experience of what it takes to run it. You'll want to bring in the schools to see how it affects them, you know? I think Kevin should be a non-voting, you know, member. And, you know, Kevin may recommend other people, too. But I think the first, if you really want to get this, is first ask town meeting.
I think you're right.
If town meeting says no.
I think it's a good way to start.
And I think the annual would be the best, better place than a special.
But, but if it's on the, for a vote at town meeting, and, and I was going to pull a lever and say yes or no, wouldn't I want that information of the pros and cons and costs and, and, and all that stuff answered before I vote on it?
Maybe, maybe not. You know, some, you know, what I hear is there is a, you've heard from a small number of people, you know? I, I haven't heard from, from anyone. Doesn't mean that there aren't people out there. I'll probably get the calls tomorrow morning. But let, you know, town meeting, because again, it's just to see if they want to have that committee.
Is that a non-binding question, then? Is that the?
No, it would be setting up a committee, and their purpose would be to review it, and to come back at the next annual town meeting with their recommendation.
Okay.
Some, some of the towns that I talked to, it wasn't so much setting it up because they went long. I think they wanted to move it to a Saturday, because the way that society is going, nobody was showing up. And they had meetings that they couldn't get a quorum, in, in back-to-back meetings. So they tried to make it fun, and they tried to have it on a Saturday. And even talking to Bill Greeter, where he spent some time down in Antucket, said they have, you know, hot dogs and things like that at a break, and then they go back in and reconvene, just because it was so hard to get people to come. You know, I'm, I'm happy the way, with, the way it is right now. And I, even though I've gotten a few calls and, and I've heard, you know, at, at this meeting, someone had brought it up, I'm not sure if it's broken enough to fix it, that it needs fixing. And, and I just haven't heard the outcry, other than a few people. But I thought it would be a good discussion if.
Everybody knows Jim's phone number and Frank's phone number?
I'd, I'd support the hot dog change.
Yeah. I think we can make it a fun day.
I'll give you an example. A number of years ago, there was a, a few people saying that we should go from cushions to town meeting time. So it was, a motion was made at town meeting to set up such a committee. The committee looked at it and eventually came to the conclusions that, no, we shouldn't make that change at that time. So warrant articles never put forward to go from cushions to town meeting time. Now, subsequently after that, warrant article was brought forward and approved town meeting times as to how town meeting is run. But at one point, you know, there were a number of people that recommended that. One specifically very loudly, so they put that committee together. And decided, and recommended against it.
Okay. So it kind of went full circle around?
Yeah, it went
Yeah.
Uh, full circle. Again, there was, you know, there's no right or wrong answer there, it's just what, you know, after looking at it, deciding what was probably in the best interest of the town at that time.
Okay. So what, what is the board thinking? Is, is it worth going in, in, going in that direction?
I like the idea of putting it to the town meeting.
Yeah. Throw it on the floor. You know, put it as an article, simple, quick article, and if it gets shot down, it gets shot down, and it moves forward, it moves forward. I mean, it's, it's, it's not a long debate. It's a, it maxes five minutes, you know, and I don't take on more than five minutes in the debate. It's, it's a simple thing. You either vote and either, you know, look at a committee, or not look at a committee. It's nothing to do with moving it, it's just the committee to look into it. So I don't see anything wrong with that, so.
So what I'd recommend then is, see Kevin writing already, between now and when you're putting the warrant together for the annual, you'll also hear from other people. So you may decide differently later on.
And we vote for the articles.
But, but not even to decide to put it on
Right.
Fair enough, you know, against it. But put it on Kevin's list, remember to discuss it before warrant closes.
But for, again, for the, for the annual, not for a special town?
No, I would recommend it for the annual, you know. People are more committed typically to come to the annual. Especially usually when, if you have a problem with the form, if there's nothing unusual on a special, pull people out.
If, if we had, if we did have a committee, when it find, when the committee's recommendation finally becomes, comes before the next town meeting on whether to vote, for the town meeting to vote whether to accept the committee's decision or not, can it be encouraged that the committee actually make a really thorough presentation of their findings, pros and cons, so that the town meeting members would be educated by the time they make their vote? Can that be stressed if a committee is going to be formed? I mean, I don't want the committee to go, yep, we think it's a good idea, and then sit down. I would like to have the committee say, yes, we think it's a good idea because, and go into detail, listing the pros and cons, what they discussed. So I don't want just a quick yes or no. I want, I want the town meeting to be thoroughly, in doc, uh, not in doctor, but thoroughly versed in why this decision should be made.
I, 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 I agree with you. I'd also want it not too long, because it is town meeting, you know, so I'd want, I agree with you, I don't want them just to come up and give the thumbs up or thumbs down on it. But give a good, brief overview of all the things they looked at, the reasons, bones gone, and why they decided what they did.
I mean, could it also be, you know, a report maybe put into the Foxborough reporter like the week before the meeting, or something like that? I mean, I would, to me, when you start fooling around with bylaws and how the town is run, I think people need to really be educated on these, on these things, and, and a great effort should be made because you're changing the way town does business. And I think that's important for people to, to know what they're voting on and why.
Right. But between, I think, we'd want flexibility, because I wouldn't anticipate, per se, a warrant article the next year for their recommendations. It may just be their presentation of the recommendation, and the bylaw change coming later on.
Possibly, yeah.
Because again, if they do a warrant article, they'd have to then go in front of the advisory committee, they'd go in front of you to discuss that, and that's, that would be the, you know, the way they'd get it all out. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Typically, on, on one of these town meeting-appointed committees, the basics you want to address in the warrant article, remember what you're, what the town media is doing is considering if it wants to have a study done on a topic, not whether it wants to do it or not. So the typical parameters in the warrant article are, who will be the voting and non-voting members? Who will be the appointing authority? What is the committee's term? How much time are you going to give them to report, typically a specific date? And then in the charge, exactly what it is you want the committee to do. So that it doesn't sort of make up what it's going to do, it does what you want. And then town meeting, with a warrant article drafted that's to your satisfaction, and Frank's presumably, then the town meeting, of course, can amend it and change the terms, or change anything in there that they want. Because you've stated the four corners of the article, and the town meeting can change it. But then town meeting has the discussion and decides if this is meritorious and they want to have a committee that investigates this, or not. So they're not making a decision, they're just saying, do we want it? And one of the things you can put in the charge is the form of the report. You know, will it be a report back under Article One, reports of committees? Will it be a specific proposal? Really up to you to decide what it is you want this thing to accomplish. So I can draft something, I mean, if, if you decide you want to do this, I can draft something up, send it, I think, to the folks that probably have a, stakeholders, Frank, town clerk, chairman of the AdCom. Get a draft that we all think makes sense, and then put it back in front of you at some point in plenty of time for you to consider if you like the format of it. But, but that's only if you decide that, you know, you do in fact want to explore this. Move it.
Okay. Any more discussion? Anyone want to make a motion?
Well, I, I would recommend taking it under consideration and deciding whether you want to go forward with it, at a future date when you hear back from additional people at this time. You know, one of the things, Kevin made a, a great point with regard to the charge. Right now, we're just talking about Saturday. You know, one of the things, you know, that people have discussed with me about the warrant is taking articles out of order, moving around, things like that. And I always explain to people that the order and the warrant is the selectmen's, the order of it. And, you know, they, they put thought into it, I'm sure Kevin does, I know Andy did, about the order. And sometimes they put certain things in front or behind, or anything like that. And generally, zoning's at the end. You know, the budget at the annual's the first article that you're really voting on. So that, you know, I'd, I'd recommend, you know, and I'm sure that the members of that committee would want to keep it as focused as possible and not get off on other tangents. So I'd like to keep it focused on that. I'm sure you're going to get calls on people wanting to do things like that. You know, talking about the reconsideration, you know, motion, things like that. You can get into a whole host of.
Opening up a can of worms.
Exactly, exactly. You know, so.
Okay. That makes sense to me. If you guys want to sit on it for a meeting or two and see what feedback, and then we can come back. And it's as simple as giving some direction to draft it.
Now's the, yeah, you're right. Now's the time to call. If anybody's going to opinion, call you. Your friendliest board member that you like the most, or Frank, and let us know. Otherwise, we'll, you know, just probably not proceed forward, so.
Okay. Anyone here want to add anything to this discussion?
Can I just say something?
Only if you come up to the microphone, Ms. Kennedy.
I really don't need a mic.
Oh, you do.
People at home do.
The only thing I have to say is the timing, seven thirty, that's a little late, like, for the seniors. I mean, would you have to have a special town warrant ever to change the time? Because a lot of them don't like going out at night. When we get their age, we won't want to go out either. I mean, you got to think about the time. I mean, seven thirty is late, especially when it's getting dark out.
Sure, yeah, please.
The, the bylaw is specific that the annual town meeting starts at seven thirty on the second Monday in May.
Right, but could we change it, say, for example, throw in, if you're going to change it to Saturday, say, also, could we change the time? That way you don't have to have two art, two warrants, articles, or whatever. Because it is late, a lot of them are afraid to go out at night. And maybe the time should be changed. And the only thing I have to say on a Saturday is, it could be, you know, people might have this sporting events, which I understand. But usually, you can drop your kid off and pick them up if you want. But especially for the seniors, because they are, there's a lot of seniors around. And I hear it, why is it so late? Seven thirty's late, because a lot of them like to go to bed like at nine-ish, nine-thirty, ten. Because I don't think I got out till about, maybe quarter past eleven or something. But especially timing, you have to be considerate to people. Also, to the other thing I heard was, a lot of people seem to have brought their children to the town meeting. I mean, to me, that's not really a place for little ones, because you heard a couple of them crying. Maybe if, you know, if they bring them, there should be a room where a couple of, maybe of the teenagers will watch them. I mean, that's something to think of, too, because sometimes you can't hear if kids are crying. So that's something to think about.
Tough to put that one in a bylaw, though.
Well, some.
Oh, shall not have crying children.
Well, no, I mean, they.
But it's, it's an accommoda, it's accommoda, just like transportation, it's an accommodation that we could do.
And this probably some, like the library or somewhere close by, so they can check in on them and stuff like, I mean, there was quite a few of them crying. And I, you know, it, you know, I felt bad because it was late. Kids like going to bed at seven thirty, eight o'clock. But that's just something to think about, the timing, and that other thing.
Thanks, Jen.
Okay.
Okay. And Sandra wants to say something?
You know, I think it's a question of, you can't please all the people all the time. The reason why we have a seven thirty meeting is because we're trying to be considerate of people that have to go to work, want to get home, want to have time to change and have a quick bite deep, because sometimes it is a long meeting. So you're not going, you know, you're going to have either the younger crowd that's going to come out that's working, or the seniors, you know, it's, it's, you're going to be doing this. So we've had complaints about, you know, if we have it too early with these meetings, people don't have to, time to come out either. So, you know, it's, it's a hard call on these things, it's not easy. So I have a question, because I'm the one who's going to have to start putting things together right now, notifying departments, you know, getting bids out. So this first meeting with town meeting would be only to form a committee, right?
If we decide to do that.
To decide, to vote on deciding whether or not to form a committee. That would be the first one. So then next year, it would be on the warrant, next year, the report of the committee, so that's one year. And it would be implemented the second year. So we're talking two years out?
Correct. Yes, and it depends on how we want to do it. Again, the first year would be the vote whether the town meeting wants to have the committee.
Right.
If it says no, it's dropped.
Right.
Says yes, the warrant could be written a number of ways, where they just come forward with a recommendation. It wouldn't be on the, per se, on that warrant at that time.
Right.
It, it could, but if you put it on that warrant, then the committee really has to present its findings in February, January. So the article could be written, and then they have to go, you know, I would recommend that they go in front of this board.
The advisory committee in the same process.
You know, they'd be the proponent for that warrant article and defend it. Or they could just bring forward their recommendations and say, this is our recommendation, do with it as you please. Then it could be, you know, put on your lap as to whether to bring forward that recommendation.
Okay.
You know, they may recommend starting town meeting at seven instead of seven thirty. But this board may still say, you know, let's put a warrant article, changing it to Saturdays. You know, it's always, you know, you can put a warrant article if you want, or your number of residents can put a warrant article on it, too.
So it sounds like with this discussion, those questions are out. And I'm sure it'll be in the paper. And if people have strong objections or comments or criticisms, let's hear it for a meeting or two, and then we'll put it back on. See if it's, see if it has any legs.
Thanks, Frank.
Great. Thanks, Frank. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
See you. Merry Christmas.
Okay. Water and Sewer, you want to come up to the table, please?
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, Mike.
Thanks, Frank. Thank you.
We'll all come up, but we're not posted as a, for a meeting.
I was going to ask you that, yeah.
Two of us are going to be very quiet.
Okay. We don't have anything in our packet, but I know you guys have been working with Kevin and together to come up with a plan to address the sewer volumes and capacities and going over the Mansfield issue. Do you want to wait for Kevin, or do you guys want to?
No.
Who wants to be the spokesman?
I'll be the lucky one.
Oh, beautiful, thanks. And if, I know, we know you, but if you could just introduce yourself for the people that don't know you.
Richard Pacella, Water and Sewer Commissioner.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so, yeah, so we're here looking for a special meeting to present a warrant for approval of funding for the IMA. The exact funding of it, it isn't, hasn't been presented to us to a point where we can speak publicly to it, but we are in the works and plan to spend the next two months finalizing everything, presenting it to AdCom and to your board as well, and looking to present it to the town in a warrant in March.
And, and the, and the timing of it, March versus two months later in May, is because deadlines in, in Critical Path?
Yeah.
They can't wait till May for the annual timing.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Kevin, we, we just started talking about the, the plan, and I know it's not public enough to bring all the details, but is there enough to generally describe what the process is to put, where things are coming from and the whole general feeling of moving something forward?
Sure. The basic components of the finance plan involve pre-sale of a certain amount of sewage, which is sufficient to generate income, which meets the debts. Let me clear up one, one thing that's created great confusion. The town does not need to come up with three point five, or three point seven, or four million, whatever the cost of the town's participation in the regional plan. We don't need to come up with that. We only need to come up with the debt service that's required of that number bonded over twenty years. So the, the financial dilemma for the town is to fund the five years while the plan is being designed and constructed. Once the plan is actually constructed and we have that sewage, all the commissioners do is sell the sewage. That generates the revenue, which pays the debt service for the next fifteen years. So it's the five years when we don't have the availability of the sewage that the plan is going to, to process that, that is the problem. So what we've done is we've created a finance plan, which has multiple layers, multiple ways to fund that five years, the debt service. It's not a gigantic number, because the first year, just to give you, for instance, might be as little as eighty or ninety thousand, because that's our share of the design fee for the engineers to design the plant. Year two, likely to be the permitting year, because you've got a whole year of going to the state and doing permitting. And again, that's a very low-cost year. Years three, four, and five, you're funding incrementally a piece of the construction each year with short-term debt, and you only pay interest on that short-term debt, there's no principal. So again, the cost is actually pretty low. We're talking a five-year cost, probably a little over a million, million and a half, not three point five or four million. That's kind of a misnomer I wanted to clear up. So with that in mind, the finance plan that we've constructed, which we've given to the commissioners on multiple occasions and changed it and altered it many, many times, and it's now at a point where it's to their satisfaction, features pre-sale of sewage, which is currently available, we have a certain amount currently available. The assumption of some revenue from billboards or advertising on the reuse tank. Now, we're not necessarily assuming, you know, which it'll be, or what component it'll be, but we've made a very modest assumption of some revenue. A revenue increase, because there hasn't, I'm sorry, a rate increase, because there hasn't been a rate increase in quite a while, and a rate increase is actually indicated right now, irrespective of whether we join the regional district or not. And in addition to those assumptions, there is already a pretty strengthful fund balance available. Fund balance is the difference between when you settle all the books up. The enterprise fund is separate from the general fund, as you know. This is a full enterprise fund, Water and Sewer. So when we collect all the revenue through, from the ratepayers, plus tie-in charges, hookup fees, et cetera, and then we pay all the obligations, there's a balance, and that's fund balance. And that's got a pretty healthy balance right now, around two hundred and eighty thousand. It's projected to get a little bigger. So another option is actually to be able to fund those first five years through taking the fund balance and recycling it. In addition to that, we're owed, we, we have some funds right now that were in dispute in the water fund balance for advertising on Route One and for repayment of some depreciation on the reuse tank that was owed to us by the craft organization. That money has to be moved over to the sewer fund, because it comes with a water fund, because those are water assets, but it's actually for the sewer department. And that's two or three, or more, hundred thousand dollars. So what we've done with this very, very, very sophisticated, very lengthy spreadsheet, which we had constructed by a consulting engineer and contributed to by quite a number of people, is we've put together this multi-layered finance plan, so that if the commissioners didn't like this aspect, we had another way to get to the same conclusion. If they didn't like this aspect, we had a backup plan over here. And the sum and substance of it is that by working with the commissioners on the way they wanted to see it constructed, we've now put together the assumptions that are sufficient to come up with that funding plan. So what we can say with certainty is that we have sufficient resources financially to pay the obligation required to join the district. The, the second piece of information was, when do our partners require themselves and us to make a decision? And the answer to that question initially was going to be November, December. However, Mansfield failed to get a quorum for their town meeting, which was the Monday after Thanksgiving. And that was fortunate for us, because we couldn't have our finance plan developed at that point. It was still, we were working on it, but we've got it pretty much done now. So the new target date is February. We've asked the question, could we go into late March, I'm sorry, into early March? And the answer from our partners was sure, that's not a problem. But that's kind of the time when we need to determine who is actually in this. Right now, there's four potential communities, Mansfield, Norton, Foxborough, and Easton. And we need commitments from everybody, because right after that vote, the engineers have to start the design process, which is, how many gallons are they designing the thing for? So that they can in turn tell us exactly what our financial obligation is, so everybody can get the authorization for the bonds to do it. And that's what's driving the request for the March town meeting. We had hoped, you know, we could put it off till later, because it's a tough time of year. But what we're being told is that our partners, we're all holding ourselves to the discipline of that timeframe. The presumption being, on or about July one, two thousand thirteen, at long last, we will sign an intermunicipal agreement, it will constitute the district, it will become a corporate entity, and it will begin the actual process of constructing, designing and constructing the regional plan. The board, we are scheduled to give the board a full, detailed briefing on the finance plan at the first available meeting in January. Now, I'm really struggling with that, because the meeting on the eighth appears to be tied up with what will likely be a very lengthy liquor hearing. The fifteenth, you've now designated for licensing issues, possible depending upon how extensive those will be. We might be able to do the briefing that night. And if not, then it'll be your next meeting. Simultaneously, Mike, on behalf of the commission, has sent a email to Larry asking for, if you approve this tonight, asking the AdCom to book two meetings, one in January, one in February. The notion being, we present the finance plan, there'll be some questions asked, we'll research those questions, go back to a second meeting, and hopefully, by mid-February, you, the board of selectmen, and the AdCom have the same level of confidence with the finance plan that the Water and Sewer Commission has right now. And then it's on to a town meeting in March to get the approval, and now we're there.
Okay. Lots got to happen. Any questions? Questions from the board?
Are we taking questions, really? I don't want to get off on the wrong foot.
Oh, let's see what the questions are, if they want to be kind of answered. None of us came with the spreadsheets and whatnot.
We, we didn't want to get too deeply into the finance plan, because we don't want to halfway it with you, because it's very complicated. We're actually flying an engineer in here, believe it or not, all the way from California, to make the presentation, because this is sufficiently complicated that we felt we needed that level of backup. So what we're trying to do right now is trying to figure out two nights successively, where we could brief the board one night and the AdCom the other night. So we get, so that we keep the guy here one night, no flying.
So this meeting is more, you're updating us, the, the wheels are going. The March fourth is tentatively set based on a bunch of meetings that have to happen.
Yes.
But we're not voting for, to open up the March fourth as a, as a date right now?
No, you're, you're being asked to actually vote the March fourth date, because for all of this to happen sequentially and get it done in time to inform our partners, there isn't time for you to wait till January eighth.
So that, that's why I asked if the board had any questions. I think we need to ask the questions.
Okay.
And if you're not prepared to answer, and I, and I fully understand it, but, and for us to vote, I think we have to have that discussion, and I think that's why I was going in that direction, so, Linda.
My only question is, do we have other, other warrants or, or things that can be held at the same time?
The only other warrant article that we're carrying right now that I would say would be fairly urgent, because we want to keep this, this warrant clean in deference to the AdCom, who is already going to be burdened with a huge amount of work. So we don't want to put a lot of warrant articles on this. But the one you might want to consider is the design fee to consider the post office as an alternative town hall. You know, that gives you a three-month head start versus waiting to the annual and waiting three more months. So it's kind of your judgment call, but that's the only other article I can think of.
That's the estimated cost, about fifty thousand for that?
Yep, yep. Other than that, I don't think there's anything in the file right now that I described as urgent that really is meritorious enough to need to go on that.
Yeah, there might be a contract or two that might get approved by then.
Something could come up. You're probably looking at roughly three warrant articles for this subject. It's different, as, there's a financial article, is, well, suffice to say, there's probably two or three warrant articles.
Yeah, I mean, like, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Is there any reason why you couldn't look at having it on March eleventh?
No, we could do it either night, but what our partners, Mansfield and Norton, said was basically, March eleventh really would be the, the latest we could go. So really, either one, I don't think there was any particular, it was just the sooner the better, but the eleventh is fine.
Just thinking about, you know, AdCom and the timing, where they're going to be meeting every night in January for the budget meetings. I don't know if this would have to be a special meeting for them on a different night, or just make them longer meetings, but maybe even that one extra week would help AdCom have more time.
I think it's neutral.
Have you checked with the schools to find out if they're?
We haven't done that yet, but, you know, it's a busy town year, but typically for a town meeting, we make do.
Well, not, not only that, you have to worry about the weather. Say, there's a snowstorm March fourth, it'd be nice to have that March eleventh meeting as a backup meeting.
We can't really.
Yeah.
No, no, I.
I would honestly say to you, if it was the case with, with particular deference to the AdCom, and maybe Larry ought to give us his thought on it, but if it were to be the case of March eleventh, we had a storm and we had to postpone, no one is going to say, okay, Foxborough, you're out of the district, because you had a snowstorm and you couldn't have a town meeting. So that's, that's fine if that happens.
They're going to have the same snowstorm we're going to have, most likely.
And they're going to have the same.
They're already, they would have already had their article done.
Although, there have been times I've come over.
I understand, I understand, but most likely. I mean, I have just no problem with this, I think we should just move on. I, I'd like to make a motion.
Jim, could we just, before you do that, could we just ask if the AdCom has any preference?
Larry Thomas, chairman of the AdCom, I'd prefer the fourth, get it over with, because we have the annual coming right after that, and we just, you know, that's going to be big. So we just need to get as much time for that as we can, so. And I know, there's a lot of vacations coming up, you know, between now and March. I don't really think it's going to make much difference, so.
Great.
The fourth would be great.
And the moderator's here. I mentioned to Frank earlier that you'd be discussing this, though I don't know if that works for Frank as well.
On March fourth?
Good.
Actually, it's at your house.
Bring the hot dogs, Frank! I already checked with council, so it's all set there.
And I just, I mean, kind of umbrella, this is something that, I mean, started with the Jay Barrows, and town meetings are already supported going in this direction, and we just keep getting hiccups along the way. So I'd be surprised if there was any non-support for going in that direction. So I, I agree with Mark, it's, anything we can do to help to kind of open the doors to whatever meeting, and if it starts tonight by saying the fourth is fine, I, I don't have any objection to that.
I just had one more thing. So during the discussions of the warrant articles for the special town meeting that we just had, we ran out of time for the municipal housing trust. And the agreement that we made with the planning board was that we would try to do that if there was a special town meeting. At the time, we didn't know if there was going to be one, but if there was a special town meeting in March, because this is a time-sensitive issue, they're working with a developer and everything, that we would, we would do everything that we could to work on it for the special town meeting. So if you, you know, we would. So if you, you know, we would, if that could be put on the warrant, and if the planning board wants that on the warrant, we wouldn't have any objection to that. We've already done a lot of work on it, we just had a couple more questions, so.
There's five.
Well, and then, you know, then there is the organ donor subject that they didn't get a chance to look at either, so.
No, they looked at that, that.
We looked at that, we just.
Yeah.
Oh, they looked at it?
Yeah.
I know it was voted on.
Yeah, no, they've made a recommendation against it.
They did.
Yeah.
I'm taking my organ donor card back.
I don't know why, I just thought, I thought I heard, you know, we didn't have enough time and we were just going to talk about it.
That was a disability, a disability.
But that went through.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion that we have a special town meeting on March 4th at 7:30 PM at the high school.
Motion made, seconded?
Second.
Motion seconded by Lorraine. Further discussion? Other than, I wish you guys luck, there's a lot of work to do on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in, appreciate it.
Everybody again.
Point out, this is, as vague as this is, and as many questions as it's probably raised in your minds, I was in here, what, last October, September, with sort of the same, requested it the same ring to it, trying to get on the fall town meeting. I think that the town manager deserves a tremendous amount of credit for bringing this plan together. This is certainly nothing that we were going to do as citizen commissioners and professionals here in the town hall, done a nice job pulling this together for us.
Yeah, I appreciate it. And if I can just add, I know, because I've been kind of biting at the chomp for the information, out of respect for you, the board, everything's been going through you guys, they wanted to make sure you guys are complete buy-in and working on it, and then bring it back to us, so we intentionally didn't put our hands in it yet, just to let you guys, because I know you guys have been working hard on it.
Keep your hand out of the sewer, Jim.
You can't have the last word on that one.
Shut the flush up.
That would have been a good one. Okay.
Action.
Yeah, renewal of 2013 licenses, so we have a bunch of things to sign. Anyone get in early to sign them?
Yes.
Kevin, you want to give any big surprises on this, any big changes?
Nope, they're all in order, and you can, you typically do these with a blanket motion, and then unfortunately, you have to stay here a while and sign them, but they are, all the ones that are ready are ready.
Motion to approve all renewal for 2013 licensing.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Just a note for the board, this chairman, just wants you all to know that in order to get this done for you every year, there's an enormous amount of work that goes on, primarily Sandy and our office. The fire and police inspectors and the building inspector do an incredible amount of work in a very compressed timeframe to get all the inspections done, to pull this all together for you, so I would be remiss if I didn't say something.
Very, very appreciative. Thank you.
Action.
Right, action items, we have two meeting minutes from November 27th and December 4th.
I always look down, Lorraine.
I just had one question on the November 27th chairman's update. Through town council, the craft organization council has been asked if there's any interest in further negotiations with the town. I thought we were waiting to hear from them on that.
Could you just point that out to me again?
It's the last paragraph of the chairman's update.
What's the question? That's.
It says here that they indicated they are so, a meeting with town council will be set up in the near future. I thought we were waiting to hear if they wanted to do that.
That's correct, we're waiting word back from them.
So, because this says that they wanted to, you know, I'm reading this as if they already stated they wanted.
They did, they did.
They did, okay.
I'm not trying to be evasive, I'm not sure what your question, what I said was, I had reached out to them to see if we could collectively move forward, whatever X, Y, and Z is, and at the same time, they were reaching out to us that said, do we have interest now that the dust settled to move forward through Dick Elman, our council? So that's when I came back to the board and I said, is it okay for the board if we, not to go into negotiations, but to sit, to see what our mutual interests were, and once we got an understanding, I would bring that to the board, and it would go to every other board that needs to decide on whatever the issues are. So that's what's in process right now.
Okay.
Is there a question on the wording of it?
Yeah, I guess I thought I was understanding that we were waiting to hear if they were interested to have that sit-down meeting, and that that would be the next meeting. So have we heard from them that they want to meet?
Yes, we have, and I think we heard from them before I brought this to the table, and that's why I brought it to the table.
Okay, okay.
Love that we approved the minutes for November 27th.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. December 4th meeting minutes?
We approved the minutes for December 4th.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any other comments? All those in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Under action items, there's a donation of $200 from Martin J. Dumbakaln Dembalkan in memory of Shirley Delisle to the library gift fund. I apologize if I pronounced that wrong, which I think I did.
That we accept with gratitude.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. There is a donation of $400 from the American Legion to the Veterans Gift Fund.
Well, I move that we accept the $100 donation from Joanne Pratt.
I'm sorry, yeah.
So veterans get one with gratitude.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I also moved that we accept the $400 donation from the American Legion to the Veterans Gift Fund.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And there's a request from Bill Cunningham over at the Orpheum Theater for four single one-day beer and wine licenses, December 26th, December 27th, December 28th, and December 31st.
A yearly thing?
Yeah, it's the Three Stooges and the comedy.
It's a great show.
Sure is.
Just a note, this is the Three Stooges Film Festival, because I know that'll make a difference.
That's what we just said, yeah.
I go there.
Yep.
Big event.
And we go every year.
We did get notice of the casting call, in case anyone else want to go.
We'll shave your head and gain some weight, we'll ship you right over there, Kevin.
I move that we approve the four one-day beer and wine licenses for December 26th, 7th, 28th, and the 31st, the Orpheum Theater.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, further discussion, anybody? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Gerald Loomis, there's a constable renewal appointment to a three-year term expiring December 18th, 2015.
So I moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, motion carries 5-0. Nicholas Panagopoulos at Christina's, there's a request for an early opening on Sunday, December 30th, for the Patriots' home game.
Is everything copacetic up there right now, Kevin?
In terms of the conditions that you set, yes. There are ongoing issues, I certainly won't represent that that's not the case, but in terms of the conditions you set, to the best of our knowledge, yes.
Okay, and that was in recognition of the email that went around?
Correct.
That's, okay.
There appears to be an ongoing issue and a dispute, but that is frankly not anything we want to be drawn into the middle of.
Okay, but our conditions that we met are being followed, shouldn't affect this?
Ours we know. The only way we would know is if we got a complaint from a patron, but by this point in time, all of the engagements that were booked are, should be over according to the schedule we have, they are over. So if any deposits weren't ordered, weren't honored, I would guess we would be getting notice by now.
Okay.
But those are only deposits that had been made as of that date for events that were on the list that was attached to your motion. Anything outside of that wasn't part of your condition.
Okay.
And this would be 11:00 AM opening, right? What time's the game?
That's, yeah, usually we have a, I look at the Patriots' schedule. Does anyone know what the game is on the 30th?
That'd be the Miami Dolphin game, the last game.
It's at 1:00 on the 30th, Frank, it's at 1:00, Frank knows best.
Frank knows, yeah, all right. Make a motion that we allow Christina's to open at 11:00 AM on Sunday, December 30th.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion on that request? All those in favor? Motion carries 5-0.
Make a motion that we allow Christina's to stay open one hour later than permitted at this time on New Year's Eve.
It'd be a 2:00 AM closing.
2:00 AM.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, under discussion. I think we always stipulate that even though they're staying over later an hour, that doesn't change the serving time of liquor.
Last call, 1:30, drinks off the table quarter.
Okay, motion made, and comments, any more comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Does the chief have a copy of that, too?
He does, and we put the altered last call and drinks off the table times automatically.
I would assume there's probably a detail there anyway.
I'm sorry?
I would assume there's probably detail there anyway.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And there's also a copy of a quitclaim deed that's in our file from the Conservation Commission granting certain property for a certain amount of money. There's no map, and there's no explanation. Does anyone know anything about this?
No, these are, this is donated property pursuant to a subdivision filing. I don't know a lot more about it than that.
Yeah, I didn't.
So it's in our action items and not in our information, so what action are we being requested to do on this?
Approve acceptance of the land.
I thought this town didn't accept land anymore.
And has, like, Conservation or anybody put their two cents in? I just, I don't know enough about it.
Why don't I find out some more about it for you? Because I don't know much about it.
Not that I disagree with taking it, I just, you know, usually Randy's got his hair all standing up when we do this, you know?
Well.
We'll get it back, we'll find out more about it and get it back on your agendas, you know, if it is a straightforward, very quick thing, we'll get it on your agenda some night for a two-second vote. If it's more complicated, then it's going to need some time on another agenda.
It's, it's open space, so I just would like someone from Conservation to chime in or something.
Well, the thing being, too, and I've been sitting here before, we have a meeting, we don't have a meeting for the end of the year.
You don't have one until January 8th, but I don't know anything.
What I'm saying is, a lot of times, this has tax reasoning to accept this and get it off their taxation, da-da-da, shame on who for not coming.
It was urgency, nobody told me, so.
Well, the Conservation Commission, as grantees, already signed it back in, back in November. Yeah, so maybe we get some more information and talk about it at the next meeting. Okay, that's it for the action items.
No need for the exec session tonight, there is no, nothing to report on that, that's the ongoing, nothing to report.
That's good news, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Just like to say Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays.
Hold on, hold the show.
What happened with that, I just got a call on what that is?
We don't know anything about it.
You want to, you want to?
Yeah, if you know.
Draw my motion.
But I was just told by Lisa, who does know.
Okay, you want to just sit down and take a breath? We have no place to go.
Did you run from home or your office, Randy?
Our revenue officer, Lisa Sinkus, just called, and she was watching at home and explained the situation. This is part of open space, apparently there was part of the subdivision plan over by Lawton Lane, I guess the planning board has approved, the taxes are paid through the end of December, and the deed needs to be accepted by the end of the year, so that there are no taxes that are going to be owed next year. This is stimulated, further discussion about acceptance of land, but this one has already been accepted by the Conservation Commission.
So it was accepted, so if they accepted it, they.
Kind of what we thought, but.
Yes.
I was gonna say, give it five minutes, but.
Apparently, it'll cause, it'll cause some tax issues on our end, and it's already part of an open space plan that the Conservation Commission's already approved.
I move that we accept the deed.
Motion made, seconded?
Second.
And under discussion, and I, I'm not speaking against or for this right now, I don't know anything about it, but the fact that, it's nice, the fact that we're taking something off the tax book is good for the Conservation, but, and I remember a couple years ago, you know, Paul Mortensen was on the board, he voted against it, there was somebody else voting for it, and it was a decent parcel, but it took it off, and there was no benefit. It was going to stay open anyways, you couldn't develop it, but now it took it off the tax books. Is that?
I'm in complete agreement with, with that, that point of view, and I think that's why, you know, Kevin has brought forward this as a topic for, you know, for further discussion. There's a policy recommendation that's being worked on, I believe by the town planner, you know, on this, and I know Kevin's spoken about this at the meeting, but this is one that's, has already been in process and has gone through the process, but I think for others, I believe, like, the expectation is that we'll have a policy to address how we accept this, so we don't wind up picking up all the scraps, you know, in town, setting bad precedent, but this is part of an open place, open space planning development that, you know, apparently.
So if I look, there's a subdivision plan with 10 lots, and then 11th lot is part of the open space.
That's what's just been conveyed to me.
Okay.
So you've got two, you've got one parcel about two, a little bigger than two acres, it looks like.
One and a half, and one's 20, 15.
600,000 square feet, so parcel B is outside of that.
1.5, and this one is, I think I fit in my head, it's like 13.
It's around 20 acres and acre and a half, yeah, right.
So it's, I'm sorry, so it's not the case of Mrs. Jones having some parcel, she paid up her taxes but doesn't want to continue to do it, so gives it to the town, this is...
My understanding of, you know, of the open space development is certain developments are developed, and, you know, with, with the intent that a certain amount of the property associated with the entire development is then a community, community use, and I guess the history has been that those open spaces.
Is this an OSRD, do you know?
I can't speak definitively on it, but that's what it's sounding like to me.
Yeah, you know, the OSRD bylaw provides for a certain amount of common land to be donated in return for greater density with respect to the construction. It's actually a requirement of an OSRD that it be donated.
You can make the lot smaller.
So I suspect, just looking at the dimensions, I suspect that's what this is.
Well, it's defined as, it's part of, in Big Colony Put It Together, definitive open space residential development plan of land.
Yeah, it's typical, instead of having 40 Bs, you can go down to 20,000 square-foot lots, and you share the open space towards the lot size.
But I'm glad you were here, Randy.
I'm glad, actually, Kevin knows the law better than I do.
I'm glad we were both here.
And Lisa was in, Lisa was in the audience calling it.
I'm glad, for Christmas, too, I'm glad for us.
All right, so if I recall, the motion was made and it was seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you for watching, Lisa.
I knew she'd watch these meetings.
She says she did, but I would bust her.
All right, and Linda was just saying Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah and Happy Holidays, right?
Yep.
So, all right, motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, seconded? I'll second it.